The Hanson Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on August 6, 2009 at 7:00 PM at Hanson Town Hall in the MBL Chapter 48 on the application of Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless for a special permit under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws Section 7L and Section 8D variances under Town of Hanson zoning bylaws Section 7L4B and 7L6 and 7A-1. Height in Section 7L6E setbacks, site plan under Section 7G to allow for construction of a personal wireless service facility consisting of 150 feet monopole tower, externally mounted wireless antennas and radio equipment. Cables within the pole connecting to ground equipment within a fenced security enclosure and an access drive at 111 Liberty Street, map 91, lot 26. Hanson's address is map. Property is located in the Residence A Zone. We have a comments from the Town Building Inspector, Robert Curran. He says, "I have no objection to the proposed. However, I would recommend that as a condition of approval, the access will be maintained and inspected periodically and that no trash or debris be allowed to accumulate at the site. Security is critical of this location. The fence, gates, and locks must be checked at frequent intervals as well. A building permit will be required prior to the start of construction." This is Robert Curran. Okay, let's start here. Selco, can you state your name?
Sure. Do you want me to phone him or is he here? What do you feel comfortable reporting?
I can do it.
Do you just want to state your name for the record?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. And my name is Mike Giamo and I'm the attorney for Selco. I've got a team of experts here who can answer various questions on engineering or sound or the real estate deal or anything else. But I'm going to present the application and then they've got some presentations also.
Excellent.
So could you just spell your last name and address it?
Sure. G-I-A-M-O. So we are here, as you read from the notice, we're here on a special permit, variances, as well as site plan review for a 150-foot monopole tower which would provide wireless coverage from Verizon Wireless to the north part of the town. Filling a very large coverage gap that currently exists where the service is inadequate. There's a second carrier, T-Mobile, that has told us that they're also interested in locating below us on that tower. So it would provide service for at least two carriers and be designed to do that. The installation, as you know, is externally mounted antennas on a frame as well as, I'll peel these up. Mark, if you want to find the plan, you could. It's externally mounted antennas on a frame. The wiring's inside the monopole tower. The monopole is just a cylindrical pole. It doesn't have any lattice or anything else on it. It's just a solid cylinder. And there's equipment at the base of the tower. That's the radio switching equipment, the power equipment that makes the tower work. And then there's a fenced enclosure for security and safety so that people don't have access to the site. As the building inspector indicated, there's an extension of the existing gravel path that runs from the parking area behind the school out past what I think is the wastewater treatment facility back there or a pump station. And then behind that to the site that the town selected for the wireless facility. This is town land, obviously. Board Selectmen entered into a lease with Verizon Wireless for this site after the town authorized them to do so. So it's, in that sense, a cooperative effort with the Town of Hanson to provide that service. So this is a picture of the installation. This would be Verizon's antennas. This would be the second carrier, presumably T-Mobile based on their interest or any other carrier that may have an interest. So that's the, that's sort of the basic description of this. So I have described in some detail in my application narrative here, which I filed, the background and the standards for your review, step by step, based on your bylaw and the things you have to find in order to grant approval, which we believe you'll be able to find based on the facts. And so I'd like to walk through that, if that's, if that's okay. So I described the installation, described the gravel driveway. The utilities are running in from an overhead utility pole and three new utility poles that would be installed adjacent to the new driveway. This is an unoccupied use. It only requires any infrequent maintenance visits. So there will be a regular schedule where some people come, they will do check the fence and other things, as well as the equipment, calibrate things, you know, update things that need to be updated, et cetera. And then it's a technician in the van. They come every couple of weeks depending on what the schedule is. And there are no hazardous material, no discharge of any hazardous wastes. There will be an on-site emergency generator that will meet all applicable standards. And there will be any addition of impervious coverage because this can be a gravel installation, it's like a gravel, ground surface. I know you're consulting, you have questions about stormwater and we're happy to address those and also, you know, we'll comply with the standards to the extent applicable for this installation. We talked about the standards. So under a special permit, you're authorized to grant a special permit on any municipal property in any zone after a 2/3 approval by Town Bureau, which this site did get, and that is evidenced in the application. You have a height restriction on a tower for reasons that we can explain to you in terms of like wireless coverage. This tower would be proposed at 150 feet because that's the height that Verizon Wireless would need to cover their coverage gap and it would allow for a second carrier below that that could also cover a coverage gap that they may have. And so from that standpoint, we'd be asking for a variance of the height restrictions to the extent they apply. There are no existing tall structures in that area of town that would be suitable to fill the coverage gap. And you have a requirement that facility should be designed to be camouflaged to the greatest extent possible. This facility is going to be located within an existing area that's mostly vegetated. There's screening by dense tree growth surrounding the general area and will provide a year-round visual buffer. And it's at a location that was approved by the Board Selectmen after they were authorized by the town. And we did a balloon test last weekend. I don't know if the board got a chance to see that, but it was a very favorable test. We do have, Sean has some photos. If that would be helpful, we can pass those photos around also from the test. But basically, the result is that the balloon was visible on the property itself, but it was not visible from the surrounding areas. And they took photos from a lot of different places to prove that.
Does he have the locations that you took photos from? We can present those out if you'd like, but I'm sure.
We do. We have a map that shows where they came from and then a picture. And if you can see the balloon, if you can see the balloon, they roughed in what the tower would look like.
Yep.
If you can't see the balloon, they just show you the picture. And the only places where you can see the balloon were actually on the property, the town property itself or across that town.
Excellent.
Your, I'm not sure if you can, is this right?
Yes. You can keep going.
Okay. That's fine. So there are camouflage requirements for ground-mounted equipment shelters. This is a facility, in the former times, Verizon did install fairly large shelters sometimes. They nowadays do not do that. They have equipment that's mounted, but it's not inside a building. So it's a much less obtrusive kind of installation. So it'll be, within the fenced enclosure, it'll be an equipment cabinet, basically a self-contained cabinet for the equipment. And so we've addressed that in this application. There's a requirement that says to the extent that any facilities extend above the height of the vegetation, they should be painted in light gray or light blue to then blend with the sky to the extent that does not violate applicable regulations. And we are open to discussing whatever kind of painting, if you want any or not. I mean, typically, these are just a galvanized steel color. But in some towns, we think it is better to have a colored, a lighter. We would prefer the galvanized standard power finish, if that's acceptable. Otherwise, we'll defer to your judgment on that. Talks about equipment shelters shall be located in underground vaults or designed with architectural styles, et cetera. And this is again not going to have an equipment shelter. It says, "Facilities should be lighted only if required by the FAA." We cannot believe this one would be lighted by the FAA, Sean. Do we have confirmation on that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And so we don't have any lights that would be on this facility. If a technician showed up, there would be an emergency type of light, a motion type of light that they could trigger and it would provide them with the safety if they had access to the site at night to repair an outage or something like that. But there's no, there's no lights that are going to be on at all times. Let's see. No signage is proposed. Your requirement says, "Signs are limited to those needed to identify the property and the owner warned of any danger." No trespassing in owner identification signs and signs that regulations require, like the SDC regulations require. Those would be the only signs that would be on the site. They'd be the minimum on the site. We're not looking to use this as an advertising site or anything like that. But I can just state that it's not within a historic building or historic district. It's not within an open area visible from public roads, residential developments, or within 300 feet of scenic road or scenic vista or scenic landscape. It's not located in a weapons or weapons buffer area. And on one of the sheets of the plane, you can see there's a weapons line, but it's well over 100 feet away from this location. We'll go outside the buffer. The diesel fuel generator is going to meet all industry standards and requirements for fuel containment to meet any requirements for minimizing risk of any adverse events. We talked about stormwater runoff and Mark will address that in a little bit. There's questions. Doug Chidell is here from Modeling Specialties. He conducted a sound assessment. Based on that, with some mitigation that was designed for the site after he got a chance to look at it. So would those plans reflect Doug's work? And it will not generate noise in excess of 50 DBA at any property lines. It will meet your standards in that respect. It requires that facilities comply with the safety standards, the RF safety standards. And we've provided you with information from Dr. Donald Hayes in Exhibit D that confirms that in fact the levels are 1% of what the federal regulations would allow. So very, very low emissions on the RF side. We've requested variances, and I know you're used to granting variances. Typically, there's a requirement for hardship and for shape, solar topography, a lot creating hardship. And that is the standard under Massachusetts law. There's several cases under federal law that state that you can still grant a variance in a wireless context in order to prevent there being a prohibition of wireless service. So if there's a coverage gap that needs to be filled, and the way to fill that requires that you get a variance from the local zoning bylaw. The federal law, the federal courts have authorized that as an exception to the general variance standards. And I've addressed that right up here. We did have some site constraints and that's why the site is located where it is. It is only 48 feet from the property line, which is a pretty good distance. But your bylaw requires three times the height, which is, can be 450 feet. That would push it way over to the right. And that was not the area that we were authorized to locate the tower. So from that standpoint, the only way we can put this tower up is to get the setback variance. There's a 150-foot height because that, as you're going to hear, that's what's required to fill this coverage gap. And so to the extent, it's a little unclear from your bylaw what height provision actually would apply in this case. But to the, assuming that there's a height standard that would apply to a tower that's lower than 150 feet, requesting the variance to 150 feet. And let's see. I think just overall in summary, the variances are needed in order to accommodate this facility to avoid an effective prohibition of wireless service and therefore justify it as a matter of federal law. So you have the authority to grant that. And then you have a site plan review requirement. I'll just walk through those standards if that's, if that's okay. This is a site where the utilities will be brought in. There's no water or sewer required, so there's no water or set table. There's no occupancy in this facility. It requires minimizing the volume of fill, the number of removed trees in the area of weapons displaced. There will be a minimal amount of tree removal in the immediate area of the proposed construction. The facility is not going to cause any appreciable increase in stormwater flow or any soil erosion, air-water pollution. It's not going to impact any weapons. There's a standard for pedestrian vehicular safety on the site. The site is going to be secured so that there's not going to be any unauthorized vehicles or pedestrians who can access it. There's going to be one parking space for this technician. It would be a parking space along the gravel driveway next to the fence and adjacent to the site. So they're not going to have to park on the, you know, the school parking lot and walk to the site. They'll be able to park there and leave. It's not going to be an obtrusive installation. Minimize obstruction of use from public locations. We just did give you the balloon test results to show that that's the case. Control the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas from public ways or premises that are residentially used or owned. This site is screened from every place except for the immediate vicinity on the school property. The residential zone that's next door to it is very heavily forested in that part of the site. And so it's effectively screened from that area. And the residence is at the other side of the school property. It's also screened from there. It's not visible from that area according to the balloon test. There will not be any headlight glare. That's another one of your standards. We talked about light. One of your standards is minimize lighting intrusion. So this is not going to be a lighted facility except while the technician is there, if they're at night ever. Talked about the character and scale of buildings in the vicinity. This is kind of a unique installation. We're not going to have an equipment shelter, but this tower is tall because that's the function. It has to be tall to work. But again, given the sighting, the tree canopy around that is affected and camouflaged from the roads. There's no groundwater discharge, wastewater disposal, no storage or handling or containment of hazardous substances there. Other than that, there'll be diesel fuel and a self-contained generator the way you might have at your house or your place of business. Very similar to that. And it's going to be all for the whole state requirements and industry standards. And that's, that's the run-through on your, on your bylaw. We have an engineer here who can talk to you about the coverage needs. We have an engineer here who can talk to you about site design and stormwater questions. We have a sound consultant here. Who's the consultant who can talk to you about your questions about the noise testing that you did and the results of that noise testing?
Are they going to give any sort of presentation or is this it?
I think we can give a presentation on anything you want to hear, but I would like to do the coverage presentation. If that's okay.
Thank you.
My name is Soveo Chrismani. I'm the architect and contractor of the site. Just to give you a little view quickly, the black locations are existing locations. These just represent the direction that the antennas are pointing at. This blue is the proposed location of the site at 111 Liberty. At 146, which is the rad center of the antennas. The tower itself is 150 feet. So going down four feet, it could be the middle of the antenna. As you can see with the white spaces, the green color represents where there is currently coverage, which is reliable. Green is reliable coverage. The white spaces do not necessarily represent that there is absolutely no coverage, but it's not reliable coverage. But green represents good reliable coverage. I flip over, read the site. Again, here's our site location. You can see the white spaces around them are well-covered, connecting the neighboring sites and the roads, East Washington Street, Brooklyn Street, State Highway 14, State Highway 58. And, you know, a lot of them are now connected instead of this whole area being like a devoid of coverage island. So with the, with the height that we're proposing and the location, this site fits very well into the whole platform of providing coverage within Hanson.
So how does the frequency coverage work? When you pick this location, when the applicant picked this location? Can you explain to us how, why that area works? There are other towers. Can you explain to us how the towers actually, do they communicate with one another? I'm not quite sure how, you know.
So the starting point is obviously lack of coverage.
Yes.
So that is, you know, and then let's say we start off somewhere around here. Because, you know, I'm an engineer, so I know how this very process starts. So I would have started somewhere around here where you have major junctions of roads and traffic areas or maybe there's a dense population around the area. So I would have started around here and I would draw a ring, a circle of, let's say, one mile radius or half a mile radius, depending on the density of population and road traffic. And then we send it out to a real estate person who would come back with few, you know. The first thing is to look for existing structures. That is the first priority because that's the easiest to build in less time, you know. If there aren't any existing location of structures and also those structures should meet the criteria for providing, filling in these, all these major roads and arteries that we're proposing or trying to fill. So if there is an existing structure and it doesn't meet that criteria, then, you know, it falls out of the selection. So they come back, they bring back certain candidates. You know, here's this location, that location. We put that into our design tool, propagated using our power and height and antennas and, you know, the directions, best direction to try to cover and get as much out of each location as we can. And then you see what is presented here with that green coverage.
No question. Say you were to take 25 feet off that tower, what would you cover the area up down to? If you were to reduce the height to say the one in, what's that number? Looks like that's 125 feet tall. You got one number of this, 98. I'm just curious, how much coverage would you lose if you reduced the height of that, say 25?
I cannot give you an exact answer, but I can tell you that the areas where you, you know, for instance, here, there would be a pole that you would carry or even a, you know, a data connection. You would be only carrying on State Highway 14. If you were to use it to say 25 feet, probably, I would say it may not carry as far as it is carrying here. This would not extend as far as, you know, it's on the edges that is more critical to have a higher height. And with the higher rad center, it's easier to contain and control the coverage terminology antennas. Imagine, you know, a torch. If you, you know, bring it down and you're trying to put light in an area and if you raise it, you can shine it wherever you want.
Right. Of course, it's going to work out of tolerance. Now, I'm just curious, will it still work if we were to reduce the height on it? Will it still work officially, effectively to cover the area where we don't have coverage?
It would work, but not as well as it would.
There's another issue here too, which is there's a very tall tree canopy around there. There's very tall white pines and other, other trees. So part of the reason for the height is to make sure that you've gotten above that tree canopy too. So I don't think if it was brought down 25 feet, in addition to whatever the radio waves would do naturally, you may have interference with surrounding tree coverage.
Yeah.
And you're right, the other thing is if you want T-Mobile, you want a second co-locator out there. T-Mobile needs coverage. They're going to be below whatever level we're at.
I see.
And at some point, there would be grass in the first pole because it's still open for them. So that's, you know, another reason why 150 is a, is a good height for this installation.
Does this pole have room for any other carriers?
Yes, it does.
How many more carriers?
Mark, is that a more question? Should be a total of four carriers that can co-locate on that.
So if you have four carriers, I'm assuming Verizon is going to be a top of each, would you say 146 feet?
Right. It'd be 136, 126, 116 would be the bottom one, which is definitely getting into the tree area.
Exactly. So the lower your goal, the less coverage you would have. So you want to be the top in the total pool essentially.
You do. But if you have some other carrier come into you and say, "We want to build a new tower," you're going to tell them probably, "Well, see if you can go on this one." This one would have capacity for additional carriers if it's the right location for them and meets their needs. But it's designed to do that.
Okay.
And we go on other carriage poles when they build them rather than build our own because, you know, everybody designs them to hold multiple carriers.
Just, how many more people roughly do you plan to extend coverage to?
Excuse me, can you just state your name?
I'm Ruth Sullivan, Women's Hanson Press.
We're going to open this up to the public also, so yourself. So please kind of like get through this. Can you save your questions to the end?
Yes.
Thank you. Are you all set?
Yes.
I guess we can either respond to this or Mark question now or wait to see what questions you guys have.
Yeah, why don't we just, do I have the presentations from the applicant boards?
Well, I don't really have too much of a presentation, but I did receive the consultant engineers. First of all, my name is Mark Kloski. I'm from Hanson Design Group. I did receive the peer review or comments and we did not have any problem, any major issues with any of their comments. Basically, the site is very minimal disturbance and very minimal impact. Basically, as Mike described, it's set behind the school, Hanson Middle School, in a parking lot. I believe the fenced in area is part of a recirculated filter, sand filtration for the septic system. But there's basically a grass strip to the north of this filtration area. And the driveway would be about 200 feet long. It's a gravel driveway, 12 feet wide. The compound is 50 by 50 or 2,500 square feet, crushed stone, very pervious for stormwater infiltration or rain.
How's the material? Did you, so you did a soil test to see?
We have not. I did review, inherently, the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service's Soil Survey Manual for this area. And parts, basically half the way through the driveway are considered Class B soils, which are on earth infiltration capacity and capability. Half, the rest of them remain half of the driveway and where the compound and basically all the way out, I think it's a cedar swamp, are kind of classified as CD soils, which C is slower, D is essentially impervious. But the CD pool rating is due to the topography where it can shed water or it's going to basically act like a hole when retained. We are not in that area where it's going to retain, but... So the only pervious areas are the cement concrete pads, which the telecommunications equipment can go on. I believe T-Mobile's is approximately 150 square feet. Forgetting the total for Verizon, but the total of cement concrete and including the pervious area of the transformers, the communication involved, is about 730 square feet. So very minimal impact, impervious equipment. Typically, with telecommunications sites, the pervious area is offset by the crushed stone compound. So again, 2,500 square feet of compound. We take away the concrete pads and the equipment. You still have quite a bit of area that's essentially pervious and that's what we're going to go for. I have not completed the stormwater analysis yet, but... I have not completed the stormwater analysis yet, but have no problem with complying to the maximum extent possible as the engineer has suggested. The only other aspect is obviously the gravel driveway coming in, twelve feet wide. It's possible that it may have to just do a small drainage swell or infiltration swell on the side of the driveway as a mountain. So, but the goal obviously is always to manage the pretty close one. We are well out of the environmental buffer or the wetlands. We're not proposing a subdivision. I did review the town biologists' stormwater and references the subdivision regulations, but again, we're not doing paid interior, so many of the components such as catch bases and piping do not apply. But again, we would be mass DEP and the town standards as best as possible. Again, that will.
And that's the purpose of only the crushed stone driveway.
Gravel driveway, crushed stone compound, and potentially an infiltration swell either along the entire driveway and maybe extending around the compound as well. Pretty small impacts usually they have. Again, typically, the crushed stone compound offsets any impervious work. So, there's no really going to, because it balances out stormwater.
Peter, did you have, I know you had some comments on your, on the stormwater aspect of it. Did you want to bring those up this time?
Sure, I think the gentleman just really elaborated on and addressed it. But in the presentation material, the supplemental material, by the way, Peter Homer, from Urban Engineering and Men's Press, we did the peer review for the form of appeals. They really didn't get into what they were doing with the stormwater. So, I mean, when they followed through and replied to the letter, I think I had a feeling I'll be satisfied. It just wasn't really discussed at all.
Was that?
Yeah. So, as far as the stormwater, the approach that he's outlined, I think would be good. I'd like to see the calculations to see, basically, to be comfortable with.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to you?
Yeah, I got a care question. Can you just briefly discuss like the fall zone around that and size of the footing and that?
He's just on the phone. Yeah, so in terms of stormwater, did anybody answer any other questions? Sean?
No.
Any other questions on stormwater? So, you have your stormwater engineer sound.
Would you have sounded, if you want to communicate, I could put you.
Yeah, I guess who's the engineer that can answer some questions in regards to fall zones? I know that the poles are meter, maybe they can.
That's what it is. I mean, Hudson is the one that did design this site. I don't think that Mark did it personally, but that is exactly what it is. I haven't done enough of these hearings and heard this. These monopole towers are.
Just a million.
Yeah, the monopole towers are built in segments, and they're designed to withstand the wind loading that's required under the building code for this part of the state and to meet all the ASPM standards. So, they're not designed to break or fall down, but if something like that did happen, they're designed so that they would break on themselves. They're not going to collapse over from the base. That's not the way they're designed to do.
They're designed to fall like this, they're designed to fall like.
They're designed to basically flip on themselves. So, if a segment were to collapse, as I understand it, it would fold over rather than the base tipping over like that.
That's especially the breakable core.
That's another one for you. That's my understanding of how those things are designed. And the, you know, the foundation is also installed to code and to make sure that it meets the wind loading and the other structural requirements, and it's based on the soils. They'll do a geotechnical survey to tell which kind of footings it has need to be and so forth before they install that tower. Your building inspector will inspect those plans and make sure that they comply with everything.
I guess that's why you have stormwater. Really good, thank you. A few questions for you. Who's the engineer?
Sure. Any, as we said, Doug's not actually a classical engineer, but he is a classical scientist. And so, we asked for a waiver from that engineering standard. You're right, say a classical engineer. Doug has done, I think, thousands of these hearings probably and has been nearly about, nearly a thousand, been a consultant for many years and is a scientist who's trained in acoustic science.
So, I guess my, in regards to, we talked about. What do you call it? Decimals?
Decimals.
Yeah, decimals. So, you've done a study in terms of, so if I were to, so I think I looked at the butters, some of the residential properties. I looked at, I think it was seven hundred, let me have, seven fifty-five to the, to the rear. In regards to the butters, residential butters primarily, will they be, I guess the question is, will they hear? Lee, you have anything from that office?
No. I did a separate study. I think you got a copy of my acoustical analysis.
I just got it, yes.
And your criteria is a little different than the DEP criteria, because the DEP allows an increase of ten decibels, meaning that if you, whatever sound you're hearing now in the background, you're allowed to increase it by so much. Yours is different, your Hanson analysis, because it's fifty decibels at the property line. And as you've noticed, we're very close to the property line. And so, the only receptor of significance to that analysis is at the property line. And the question is, does the facility propose to make more than fifty decibels at the property line? And it does not. It, the two sources of significance are the two generators, the.
Yes.
Horizon wireless generator and the T-Mobile generator. And each of those is a source about sixty-three, sixty-four decibels at twenty-three feet from the equipment. Given the installation of that so close to the property line, it would in fact produce more than fifty decibels at the property line. And so, therefore mitigation was indicated. We have to mitigate it in order to meet your standard. The mitigation, because I'm a scientist, I run the models to say in concept, what would be needed to make this work? And then, the project engineers figured out how to do wind loading and all the engineer stuff to the mitigation. And that was simply to make a C noise enclosure around it so that it casts a shadow in the direction of the residences and also the property line. And there's a C around both generators so that even when the generators are operating, and we assume that they're both operating at the same time, but they probably will not be. Horizon and T-Mobile will start their generators to test them routinely whenever they need to, whenever it's convenient for them. And it just happens electronically, so they're not on site to start the thing. And each of those will contribute to the sound at the property line. My task was to tell them how tall, how extensive does that little enclosure need to be? And they've engineered a enclosure for each of these units so that we meet fifty decibels. Incidentally, the existing sound in the back of the Hanson Middle School parking lot is forty-seven decibels. Three decibels higher, most people can't actually distinguish an increase of three decibels. So, even if you had a house at the property line, it would be, no, we do not anticipate being a burden on that house. We do not have houses at the property line. They're way over Washington Street, is it?
Yeah.
Quite distant. So, the answer to the question is that the residences will not hear this facility, because our objective was to design it to meet your criteria very close to the facility. And there are no residences very close to the facility.
So, are those, no, we have the school obviously in the other direction. Are those Cs also protecting these noise?
No, the school is not a sensitive receptor. In the school, in fact, like every commercial facility, you've got one portion of it that is a noise source. It's shielding, the building itself is shielding the glass openings, which are all facing the street. And so, the rear of the school is, there's a, I think there's a multi-purpose room or a very large concrete wall that has only a few openings. And each of those openings have mechanical equipment inside. So, if you enter that rear parking lot, pretty much all you're hearing is the school.
To the rear of the schools.
Yes. And so, in this direction is, in fact, in order to get the ambient sound, I had to go away from the school because the school is the source, I couldn't hear the highways.
I got you.
And so, I couldn't hear fifty-eight. I couldn't hear any cars. What I'm hearing is the school. And is the school going to be bothered by generators running back there? No.
Those generators do not run at all times either? I mean, that's really just an emergency, literally, emergency generator.
Backup generator.
That you would have in your house while the power's down.
Backup generator.
Yeah, and the only time that it would be intrusive to anybody at the school would be in the middle of the night when it's quiet and their mechanical equipment's not on. And of course, nobody's there to be bothered by the generator running when the power's on. And I believe the school also has a power backup generator, which I didn't document because it's not part of my study.
Yeah, I guess not, sure, I know. Was there anything else you would go?
There is in the, the shelf in the cabinet, it's actually just a little electronics cabinet. There is a cooling unit in the cabinet that doesn't kick on until it's like ninety-five degrees. And it's like a window air conditioner on our house, a little one, not a whole house air conditioner, but a little one. And it additionally makes some sound directed away from the fence. So, the cabinet itself is a shield to keep it from dominating the fence line. It also made it into the study, was characterized as part of the numerical analysis. And none of those exceed the standard, again, at the nearest property line. Any other questions?
Sounds good. Are you?
We're done the presentation.
Presentation.
Have you answered questions?
Peter, was there anything else? Did you want, did they touch upon waivers? Did you want to touch upon property review and?
The only thing, the only thing I did bring up was the regulations require a landscape plan exactly after the board. But the, there isn't a very large buffer between the facility and the property line. It's a residential piece of property. Now, there is a seven hundred foot woods area, but I just wanted to point out to the board the proximity of the facility to the property line, because this is residential property, even though it's not, there's no dwellings until you get out to about seven hundred feet.
But potentially that could be, is what you're saying?
There could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's something the board needs to think about.
It's forty-three feet.
Well, I think the buffer actually is around twenty. I think the fence line, well, the fence line shown here, I think is twenty-two feet.
And then, the pole itself, I think, is forty-something feet.
It's the pole that's forty.
The pole was, I think, I thought it said forty-three.
So, is the fence line is twenty feet and the property line is twenty-two six?
Yeah, it says twenty-two six, I said about twenty, but. I think that was the only thing. In addition, I do think the fire department should take a look at the width of the access road.
Absolutely.
As well as this turnaround.
Yeah.
I think that's important. Just the detail on the erosion control and maybe extended it all the way around the limited construction. No, that's it.
Is there any more questions for the board?
Yeah.
I was just looking at the existing conditions plan. It just looks like it's kind of lacking some detail because the roadway. I had a hard time making heads and tails out of that out of the school yet, so. Where it shows the roadway going around the backside of the school, there's also a roadway that goes around the front, correct? And then parking out in the front and some bigger. I just want to see if maybe we could clean it up and add some more details.
Recheck about C three?
Yeah, that point, yeah.
Which one is your existing condition?
I don't think they did it. C two is the first label of C three conditions. C three is the one that shows the whole site and it shows.
The one that showed the structure on the property of the school.
Yes. Look at C three, Mark.
So, I think it's C three, so.
So, I think what you're saying is there's a road that comes around the other side of the school. He wants that driveway, right?
Yeah, the road that's. Correct. And then, there's some parking over on the side, there's, you know, you got, I believe, a basketball court over there. I just want to see a little more detail, just, I mean, I had a hard time kind of seeing where it was going and.
Sure.
Just a little more detail on it.
Sean? And then, again, I think, have you talked to the fire department at all?
No.
You have not? I mean, could you?
We're going to reach out to the fire department.
We talked to the fire department, I discussed with them with what they'd like to see in terms of, you know, fire access, turnaround, there's an emergency.
Yeah, I think those are important.
Peter, you thought about, you were talking about the entire gravel around the entire.
As far as the stormwater or?
No, in terms of, were you talking in terms of fire access purposes or just?
Well, as far as, I mean, as far as erosion control.
They were talking about store around the entire thing for stormwater purposes. We go for access purposes. Is it necessary to get behind there for any reason, whether it be an emergency or?
Well, that, yeah, I would defer to the fire department on that. That's why I think they need to take a look at the plan, the width, the access. And again, I'm not sure that if they bring a pump truck down here, I'm not sure how easy it is to turn around. That's a concern. As far as erosion control, I think they only have it coming up to here. I suggest it comes all the way around, because it wasn't clear to me if this gravel road, which is extending from the back of the parking lot, drops the enclosure, it's going to be regraded? I would think it would be, but I don't know, because they didn't, they're limited to proposed grading stops above here. And I wasn't sure if this was being graded, so I suggested they ask the people if they are upgrading.
Are you upgrading that?
Right, yes, it'll be graded. I mean, it's not going to be a major regrade, but it'll probably be some gravel driveway.
So, you know, so if they're going to be moving some material here, they should some have some erosion control. And then, have a detail of what they're going to be using.
Not a problem.
I mean, in terms of, you said that you're doing minimal grading to that. Will that be a roadway since it's only going to that side? You'll be maintaining the entire thing or is that something? Who's maintaining that?
Yeah, I mean, Horizon would typically have that plowed out if they needed it, but otherwise, it's just a gravel road.
Yeah, I'm just saying in terms of like, so is it going to be?
To regravel it or something like that?
Yeah, is it going to be, is it going to be a gate? You know, what's the other purpose of getting back there? It's just a tower, right, correct?
Correct.
So, is it going to be a gate at some point in time just so people, I mean, I know there's going to be a fence, it's going to be a fence in here, but is it going to be a gate?
At the beginning of the gravel.
No, I just think it's important, it's not necessary.
We can put a swing gate right at the beginning of the driveway at the end of the parking lot.
Absolutely.
You might want to talk to the fire department.
Yeah, just maybe bring that.
They do need access to that, it's going to have to be maintained.
There's a little garage in the fenced area for the town inspector too, so probably we'd want to talk to the school.
Garage doors on the other side.
The problem with putting the gate on the gravel is people could just go around the other side. The gate would almost serve no purpose.
What they go around, what's on each side of this grass?
Yeah, they can just easily just go around it. Other town shed area, that's.
Oh, does it?
The fence is going around here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I spoke to the building inspector, but he couldn't be here tonight. But, you know, that was one of the concerns that he had is just, you know. know, it is a school, it is a distance from the school. You know, maybe, I mean, you know, even if you had a fence, technically people could still get by it, right? But I, I don't know, more of a point, more of a point to that, you know, so they're actually, they're driving around something over grass. I mean, his thing was, he doesn't want people parking back there, hanging out back there. Now there's debris back there. You know, people, you know, making a mess back there. Who's picking it up? You know what I mean? You know, maybe no trespassing, something, just so it's like, listen, you know, no one's allowed back here. Making a point, when you have a gravel driveway going back to a cell phone tower, um, you know, a teenager or whoever, you know, just, you know, it's such a great spot to go hang out. If there's a, some sort of a gate there that says, listen, you know, no trespassing, um, you know, things like that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's only, it's more...
Well, can I ask, um, does the police department monitor the cameras that are on the back of the school or is that the school that monitors the cameras?
I, I can't answer that question.
School.
This is school. The school does.
May I, I just say to Verizon, we don't want people hanging out back there.
Yeah.
We don't agree either, so, you know, we're happy to work with you, the fire department, the building inspector, whoever, if you have something that works.
Yeah.
I mean, to, to, to try and discourage them.
Yeah. That's the only point is to discourage, uh, was, you know, is it, um, you know, can somebody get by, you know, get by the gate and they want to probably, it's more of a challenge. Um, what else was there? I got a few more questions that I want to overlap the public. So maybe, can you explain this to me in terms of, um, and you just maybe in your police degree, I haven't, I haven't seen it, um, how does it work in terms of, I know you don't have to ma, you said you don't have to plow, you don't have to maintain and things like that, but let's...
I didn't say we didn't have to plow. I don't, I don't know if we do or not.
Okay.
Typically, if it's our driveway, we would maintain it.
Yeah, somebody said you're not plowing it, it's just a, a station. I heard someone, I don't know if it's General Middaugh, who said that, you know, you won't plow against a station.
I understand.
All right, so in any case, so I guess my question is, who, like, yeah, who, who does that ma, who does that maintenance on and maintains it, cleans it up if there is, you know, things of that nature? Is it Verizon? Do you guys have a management, does Verizon have a management company that handles that? Um, do you know exactly how that works?
Yeah, so, every site has, uh, uh, what they call a cell tech. Is someone comes to the site, has a couple we, every couple of weeks, just to make sure everything's fine. If, if it was a site where there was, we had to do certain plantings, they would check to see the plantings.
Okay.
If, in the winter, obviously, when the snow is going to be there, if this fluffy snow on that section of the gravel driveway, they may not want to plow. They may wait for it to melt unless there's a problem. But if they do need to get out there, yeah, they'll clean up that section of the gravel driveway. They will not plow all the way from Liberty, uh, Liberty Street. They won't plow that.
Liberty Street? No, I'm talking about the...
But I'm just saying, but they'll, they'll plow just on that gravel section.
So could you bring it up to me, you know, we, we'll mention also when you talk to the fire department?
Sure.
You know, see if that's, if that's an issue. Because our big concern is obviously is emergency purposes. We want to make sure that they're happy, um, if we want to facilitate for them whatever we need to do to make sure that, you know, they're happy and they're all right. And so, if you could bring that up a little, bring it up to them also, we'll discuss it with them, but, um, I think it'll be important for you to go.
Yeah, I mean, Verizon might not necessarily need to get back there, but if there's an emergency, the fire department needs to get back there. So it should probably be maintained every storm, just as every other parking lot, roadway and driveway.
That makes sense. It's, it's, I don't think it's a typical thing to do, but, you know, that's a requirement for us. That's a requirement. We'll deal with it.
Yeah, exactly. That's pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, any equipment that they used to get in the woods and stuff like that, we have towers on top of mountains that, that, you know, if there's an emergency, they figure out.
But this is in the back.
Figure out how to get there. This one's behind the school, so you want to make sure that, that no one's in trouble back there.
Yeah. No, I mean, I mean, we just want to make sure our, our eyes are dotted and our teeth are crossed. We don't do this every day, so we might as well find out now. We don't put cell phones out every day in the town, yes, so I think, um, you know, getting these questions answered now, then at least we know.
Yes, no, we'll follow up on that.
Do you see if I have any more questions? Yeah, I think we covered it there still. Oh, we talked about, um, FLEA preferences. Obviously lighting's not necessary, it's only 150 feet. We talked about preference.
On, on the, on the paint color, your, your, your standards do mention paint color, I'd say, you know, 99% of places, the towers in, nobody's asking us to paint them, so it's up to you what, what you want done, but.
And you said?
Very few of these are painted.
You think it's unnecessary, is what you're saying?
I think it's, I think it's unnecessary. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's used in cases where people are concerned with being able to see it against some, uh, you know, scene that they, that they want to preserve. This is going to be a, just like the other place, we have a metal monopole that picks up in the air.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it wasn't anything we're proposing to do, but we're open to, say if you had a different idea, we're open.
It seems like probably other times, the only reason why people do it, like you said, is if it's visible from these areas, like, since it's not, it doesn't seem like there'd be any reason for it.
That's what I'm...
I think for right now, I don't have any more questions for you. Um, I want to open it up to the public. Um, if anybody has any questions, was, uh, in the back, can you say your name?
Yeah, Kenny Mitchell, 75 Hawk Elm Street, Hanson, Boras Leffler. Um, I have the same, just a couple of concerns with you, just as far as security and access to it, you know? How tall is the fence going to be? Do we know that?
The fence surrounding?
The fence around the tower?
Yes, there is a fence around the tower.
You know, I realize that. How tall is it?
Oh, I think it's either a seven footer or anything, or show me an eight foot, isn't it?
Just with the school, they got middle school kids, you know? I think we should make the fence as tall as possible, you know, to eliminate kids getting in there. And like you said, the access, you know, kids going down there and hanging out.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys have done a site visit, but I think at some point, you guys should do a site visit, walk down, you know, with these guys and just see everything. Um, the other question I have is how far off of Liberty Street is it? How many feet?
I think it was, um, on Liberty Street?
Yes.
Yeah, was that thing?
Is it? Okay. Yeah, good.
It was a hundred and a half.
So when you're coming up, and I didn't look at that plan, so when you're coming up the driveway going to the school? Is it going to, the tower's going to be up to the right-hand side? Is that, or is it going to be behind the school?
If you're behind the school, it's, it's off your left. Uh, it's sort of off to the left. If you're standing...
So it's on the left of the basketball courts?
There's, there's a, to the right of the basketball courts, there's, there's a little, uh, fenced area, a little garage back there. It's back in that area.
At the left of the garage.
Okay. So it's not, so it's not visible when you're driving down Liberty Street?
No, 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 no.
Right, okay. Yeah, just the security would just be my concerns.
Yeah, again, you know, again, you know, the target point.
I mean, you stop, imagine kids climbing.
And by middle school kids, that's when you're the most scariest, man.
I imagine they will.
None of the kids I have.
No, no, it's definitely not.
So, yeah, you know, back, you know, back to that point that, um, it is a school, it's obviously if this was somewhere else, there is a school there, so those are some of the concerns based on, you know, sites with these things, those kind of, you go look at what's around there. There is a school right there, that's why we bring up those points.
This is an A with fence, so if you want a tall fence, tell us and, you know, where we can get that, get that spec in.
It's covered with barbed wire.
Yes, it is. Got three off lines. Typically, three lines of barbed wire on top.
A lot of people don't like that. Yeah, a lot of towns will not let us put barbed wire on it, but if you want us to have barbed wire on it, it's designed that way, you know? Why don't we design a seat?
Well, we, um, take a look at that. They do have a detail on two, A3, I think.
Yeah. I think there's a thought to it, when I, you know, when I do this.
One of those fences that at the top, it actually comes out, so it's kind of high with the wall.
Does it have that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is, it is actually designed like that. If you look at A2, the elevation, you can see it's actually designed just to curve back.
Yeah.
A2?
Yeah, A2. The base, the base of the pole has, uh...
Okay, I got you.
...barbed wire projecting out away from the...
Oh, yeah, A3, A3 also.
Yeah. So again, some towns want the barbed wire in the tuck, some do that, we'll do whatever.
So it's really nine feet tall with the barbed wire.
So you like?
People would like. And that can just be part of your additional recalcitrations.
Yeah, of course. Of course. Okay. My last state name for the record?
Matt Dyer, 68 Woodman Terrace, Florida Selectment here in Hanson. Um, my comment is, it doesn't matter how tall you build this fence, the kids can go up there with tin snips and cut through, uh, a hole through that, uh, you know, chain link fence. So my recommendation would be go with the chain link fence and put barbed wire. I'd recommend something along the lines of what they do with the rear, rear road tracks, you know, steel bars going down. That way, kids can't just cut their way through. I see it all the time at cells at tower sites in the state parks. Kids will make their way in there if they want to, but I think, um, that's not the way to go with a barbed wire fence and chain link.
Thank you.
Kyle Hanson, 328 East Washington, a resident. What's the danger of the tower, tower, like, if a kid got in there, like, it's obviously putting a lot of power, right?
I can't answer that question.
You know, so, like I said, could get into it, you know, like my kids all walk those trails, you know, so.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, kids get in there, like, is a kid going to get shocked? Is there, who knows? I don't know. You know, the safety of that, you know, like my kids walk through those trails to go to school, you know? And also, what's the actual location? Like, it's hard to see, I didn't get any plans, you know, I mean, it's hard. Like, I think, because if, I mean, if anybody's been back there, there's an actual road that goes back over like the waterway and big huge clearing, all right, acre clearing out there. What's the purpose of that? Why are they cutting down all the, all the woods?
Yeah.
They're basically going up back there, they're cutting probably, what, an acre of woods?
Clear for the septic system?
Yeah, I do have to believe you feel that.
Is that the least you feel about?
Yes, yes, we'll, we'll fill this with school, yeah.
Just, it's looking at the, obviously, you know, impact, personal impact, you know?
Yeah, no, I, and your concern is noted, you were trying to make sure we, you know, cover this type of thing.
Yeah, because it's winter time, I can, I can see lights at the school that exist there, obviously. It's nice right now, depends on when the study's done. Foliage is in, you know, eight months out of the year. It's not, there's no, you know, hardwood trees on our leave, and you can see through the woods, you can see stuff, so. Are we going to be looking at that tower now? I know it's 700 feet of foliage through all these property lines, I'm like, right yet? Like, what, you know, half the year, am I going to be looking, you know, up my deck deck and looking at through the woods and seeing and something like that? Like, it's 20 feet to the fence, how far from the fence are they clearing? Right through the, I think, uh, you know, all those property lines, I think it's about two property lines, right, a corner, one, and then behind.
I think it was...
The resident was right next to the school.
Let me see if I saw this.
Little salt machine, you know, obviously, you know, that's how it impacts me personally, but I just kind of want to know exactly the location and how far are they clearing around that 2,500 square feet and then the fence? You know, how far down are they, kind of here?
It's, I mean, to put, in the big scheme of things as far as, you know, setbacks and you know, you know, you have 1,400 feet to Liberty, to Liberty Street, right? I think in terms of what they're clearing, the big scheme of things, it's towards all the, the woods and that nature, it's a fairly small, you know, 2,500 square feet is almost, I don't know.
No, I mean, essentially, to clear the area for the site, but how far, right, now they have the fence and they're happening, obviously, you know, they're not clearing right through the trees, they're putting a fence around the trees.
Could you make that question for me?
It may be an additional 10 feet beyond the fence.
10 feet beyond the fence? So the fence, the block size?
In that direction? Correct, yes.
What is, what do they got, where does it go, the, um, length and width of that?
50 by 50. So then, uh, you can take a 10 feet out, you sag, you bring that to like 70.
Or at least there is 75 by 75, so we wouldn't be able to clear beyond that, and we wouldn't probably even be clearing that much.
So you're talking around 5,000 square feet? Um, yeah, I think in the big scheme of things, it's... Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any, any further comments?
I think that's all you can. Okay. Are you speaking to me? I'm sorry. Could you tell me what residential?
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Richard Barr, and I live at 146 Liberty.
Okay.
Kind of across from the school.
Yeah, you have, you're set back there?
Yes.
Off of B Street, yeah.
Could you tell me what residential aid means?
Presidential aid is a residential zoning district.
In order that someone would put a dwelling on there to live in?
Yes.
So they're altruistic in, you're going to let them put this on there for profit on a residential piece of property?
Oh, I, I didn't say, well, I don't represent anything that the board's going to do, but but what I can say is that you heard we have a school there. They require a special permit.
For the school?
Yeah. So, you know, there's certain situations that we do.
I guess what's a lot my concern with the residential is that the people that own homes in that area are under the restrictions of the residential aid, they live there because it's residential. So when the town begins to chip away at the residential, it affects the people that live there. If somebody lives in a haunted or somebody lives over on Cross Street, they're not being affected by it.
I think the idea was, especially, I know where you live, in front of your property is in the B1, in the business district, am I correct? The rear of your property is the residential A?
Triple A.
Oh, double A, I'm sorry.
Double A, then, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, like where you are, you can understand where, you know, down there, you can have a residential piece of property that was, there was a house there prior to, but to the rear of it's in the residence, double A, the front's in the business district, and now someone decides to do a business. Then you're allowed to go so many feet into the residential district.
But they're not changing anything if they wouldn't do that. That's already, when I purchased the property, with the understanding that it was digits in the front.
I'm not talking about your property, I'm talking about the district, the bit, the entire issue.
Yes, okay.
On Liberty Street. I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, you know, they, obviously, the town did the analysis and tried to put that school in a, you know, a location that they thought would fit best and with the least disruption possible. So, but again, this was voted on, you know, at a town meeting. I'm not sure if you were involved in that, you know?
I understand, I'm just presenting my concern that as they continued, if you wrote zones, they just have to consider that people actually live there. That residential people live there.
No, I.
But in another question I was going to ask you about or comment is, they commented the screening, you can't see it from here, you can't see it from there. They don't own the screen. The town doesn't own the majority of the screening, it's all private. And like Matt's dad came and he was entitled to do it, but he cleared every organic thing off of that piece of property on 58 next to Doc Smith.
Yeah.
The screening is gone. So our screening is gone.
In the, in the.
Can you state your name for the record?
Deborah Haley, 146 Liberty.
Thank you, she is the thing about that.
And when he did what he did, clearing all that land.
Who's he?
Matt's dad, Bo Dyer. The repercussions to us was losing so many trees from when we had winter storms that we got 11 cords of wood from the tree loss. Now, if they cleared this big area and there's a big storm, like we've had a lot in the past, what's going to happen to the screening?
And anybody can cut down there. I could clear my four and a half acres or whatever, right? So they have screening from 58 that blocks their power today, and then next week, somebody decides, well, I'm going to cut my trees down. I don't know.
Yeah, again.
So then the screening, it's just something to consider because.
I understand.
You can see our house now, you never could before.
I, I understand.
So the screening isn't, it's something that's permanent or something that's guaranteed?
Screening should be on the title property, first of all, your point, right?
You know what, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying.
So we could see the tower. We don't see the tower today, but we could see the tower.
Potentially.
So if he says don't paint it, well, you know what Galvey looks like when the sun hits it. You can see it from the town hall. So perhaps if they did paint it, it would be helpful in the future, because you will see it in the future. Because when I was a kid, Hanson was all trees.
Yeah.
And now look at it, so the trees are coming down. So we better see the tower.
The comments are noted, thank you. Any more questions?
I was just being impressed.
State your name for the record, sir.
That, when that, a lot of that land was donated in the town of Hanson 45 years ago, that was under the condition that a.
Excuse me, can you state your name, please?
Jim McCaffrey.
What's your address?
Spillits Road. It was under the condition they're only used for educational reasons. Can you confirm or deny that?
Can I confirm or deny what?
Because, which is kind of fast.
I cannot confirm or deny that.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Well, if a cell tower isn't educational, so.
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
What should we do? Just sit here?
It went to town meeting.
Can we look into it or?
Yeah, look into it.
I'll have to ask your local.
You know, I, I only, I only know so much about this proposed project. This is more the zoning aspect of it. I don't know the history of the school and, you know, those type of things and why it's there, when it got there. You know what I mean? I'm not familiar with those type of things. But, you know, you could probably, you know, do a little bit of due diligence and ask some questions. Yeah, yeah, and again, we're still a long way from making a decision on this. You know, we're just get the, you know, input from the public and, you know, listen from the engineers and, you know, we're going to, you know, this is a decision being made today. This is why we do this. So we want to get information from the public, what you guys have to say, take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Was there anybody else?
Drew Sullivan with the Hanson Express. I was just wondering how many more people approximately does Verizon plan to extend service to with this new tower?
That's, that's not as understanding, we don't have an answer to that.
Oh, just wrong.
This is, this is a tower that's going to provide service to that part of the town. And so anybody who's driving through that part of the town or currently lives through that, lives in that part of the town is going to have better service or have service that they don't have now. I'm glad I could give you an room now.
I guess that's a bad question. Right now, with the service that's available in that area that we're saying is not covered well, would you consider that kind of a safety concern? Where it's, I know that if I'm on my phone and I go by that area, I drop calls every day. Every single day. I mean, would you consider that almost like a safety concern if someone had to call the fire department or the police department or there was a car accident, anything like that?
I think, I think that would be a concern, yes. You can't get a call out there, you expect to be able to get out there, it'd be a safety concern. For whatever reason, whether it's upon emergency services or even, you know, some, some personal safety issue. Yeah.
Can I reply to that? Deborah Haley?
Yeah.
911, you can call my what? On your cell phone?
Yeah, you can.
Yes, you can. Okay.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, what's that to write on? When it, when it says no service, it says emergency calls only.
Can I say something to that?
Oh, go ahead.
So it was funny, yeah. You can call 911 or if there is service from any carrier. It doesn't have to be the carrier that you're subscribed to. As long as there's coverage, you could, you should be able to call 911 regardless of what carrier you're subscribed to.
Okay, excellent.
You can call the state police phone up at the top of the mountain from the cell phone.
As long as there's some type of signal.
If you have no signal.
All right. No, no, it has to have, it means that you can not have a signal from that carrier, but if there's another carrier.
No, my phone carries, I, I can use any carrier on it, that's what they told me. When I have, it says.
What I'm saying is there has to be some type of carrier there, but if you were on a mountain and there was no carrier.
Well, if you're driving on 58, you're going to get 911. 911.
Very good. How was this plan?
In the back? Go ahead.
Meredith Marine, town administrator. I did receive an email from the police chief with respect to safety issues. And this is what he said, he wanted us, he was not able to come tonight. He has no objection to the tower. As a matter of fact, that he finds the lack of coverage in the town to be a problem for a public, public safety standpoint. Many people no longer have landlines and poor cell reception can cause delays in reporting emergencies. Also, the mobile data terminals that are within the cruisers are dependent on cell receptions. Officers often lose connectivity in town, especially near the center. Those are his comments, Charlie.
Well, I live at 14670A in my former.
I'm just saying, as you drive, it's, you may be in a center, you know, right where you're located, but as the cruisers drive around the general vicinity of the town, it becomes an issue for them.
I'm ready for us to be.
No, I realize where you are.
They don't have to get service.
Yeah, I.
You can come on over and try.
I drive by there every day. But this, this is going to connect, you know, but there's a lot more areas to know where you live.
And we're not supposed to be talking alone, right?
It will be more helpful. There's no question that it will be more helpful if people would like to use the phone, but there's other issues that people are concerned about besides using it. That's all.
I don't understand.